All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, June 9, 2021, and we will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda with the addition of item 10.05 Personnel under the Consent Agenda.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, and board reports. Jim, we will begin with you.
I have no board reports today.
And I don't have anything either.
Okay, I have two quick things. The National School Boards Association is having their Advocacy Institute seminar this week. Typically, it's held in January or February, and then we all go up to Hill and lobby Congress. It's all virtual this year. So, the first day was yesterday from like 12 until 5. A lot of interesting presentations, I will have to say. Hats off to our school system because everything that they talked about, that school systems should be doing regarding to federal funding and COVID relief and virtual learning and summer school, we already have in place or have already addressed. So, I will say it was slightly repetitive for me. Tricia Yearwood was the guest speaker last night, which was pretty cool. So, she talked a lot about her experiences in high school. She was from a small town that only had about 2,000 students in it, and how important music was to her. And, you know, that they always, you know, pump up the sports, but they always kind of let go of the arts. So, it, once again, you know, we do not do that here. So, since we have the, you know, virtual academies and we have all of the, you know, all county band and orchestra and choral programs and things like that. So, my second thing is I am going to offer my congratulations to everyone tonight at the, at the length of service and retirement ceremony. I will not be there. Chopticon is playing Hunting Town in Hunting Town for softball, and I was told to not show up in shorts and a t-shirt afterwards. That really wasn't they were going for. So, Kathy will bring remarks on behalf of the board. I apologize for not being there, but parent trumps board member tonight. So, good luck to Chopticon and I, all of the state tournaments started on Monday. So, good luck to everyone. So, Mary?
Hello, everyone. I want to give an enormous congratulations to all of our high school graduates, Class 2021. It was another unprecedented year. Thanks to all the three high school principals, Lennetown High School, Ms. Mills, Great Mills High School, Dr. Hyble, and Chopticon, Mr. Perner, and their teams who coordinated everything with utmost precision. Special thanks go to our video production team and supporting services, and everyone else who made our commencement a huge success. I heard many compliments from parents, grandparents, family members, and students about the ceremony. Thanks to Superintendent Smith, who set the standard high, and the schools surpassed his expectations. Well done. I wish and pray the absolute best for all our graduates and their next journey to success. I also attended the MAVE, which is the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Nominating Committee Meeting. And MAVE, we use a lot of acronyms up here, but MAVE is the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. It was founded in 1957, and it is a nonprofit organization which supports all 24 Maryland Boards in the area of governance, professional development, advocacy, and member services. And all 24 Maryland Boards of Education are members of MAVE. And through MAVE, we get training to become effective school board members. And this committee put together a slate of members to serve on the MAVE Board of Directors. And this slate is confidential, and it will be voted on at the MAVE Annual Conference in October. Lastly, I attended the Virtual Gateway Celebration, and that was held yesterday. There were four graduates, and these four students exhibited flexibility and resiliency during COVID to meet all their special education requirements to transition from St. Mary's County Public Schools to the world of work and independence. Each student gave presentations, and I will tell you a little about the four students. Nicholas works at the Hampton Inn folding laundry. His goal is to be able to go to Walmart by himself and shop. His advice is take advantage of the jobs you can do while in the Gateway Program. Second Dylan works at the Harry Londonberg School, doing several things such as mopping, preparing food, and setting up for events. The best part of the Gateway Program, he said, was getting a job. His advice to Gateway students: Try new things and work well with others. The third student, Ryan, has three jobs. He works at World Gym, McKay's, and the Lennetown Elementary School Cafeteria. The best part of Gateway, he said, is working at different job sites. His advice is be yourself. The fourth student, Cameron, likes to play the guitar and sing in the church choir. Cameron works at the Hampton Inn folding all the tiles. The best part of Gateway is making new friends. He said he learned to ride the STS bus and to read the schedule. Cameron can independently cook for himself and have friends over. He stated he has many things to learn, such as paying his bills. He wants to work at a hotel and help people have a good time. His advice: Be kind to everyone. I want to thank the Director of Special Education, Mr. Surbiak, Cheryl Odell, Elena Batty, Krista And these students walk with their peers at their high school commencement, and this Gateway Program is two years. And the students can attend until they are 21 as SMCPs students, and they get a Maryland certificate at the completion of the program. And they gain a wealth of work, human relations, and logistical experiences. So, that is my report, and it was, we are still doing many things, the board members, a lot of things we do are virtual, but we are having a good time enjoying the successes and accomplishments of our students and tonight, our staff members. Thank you.
I'll certainly echo the congratulations to all of our graduates and was also witness to the Gateway to Independence celebration yesterday, but I really want to take my time this morning to, to send congratulations and just very deep thanks. Tammy McCourt, who is our Chief Financial Officer, and all of the folks in finance, really work behind the scenes to make sure that the budget that we send forward, that the board votes on and goes to the county commissioners for funding, is, is comprehensive, it is, it is well explained, and is correct to the penny. And that doesn't happen by accident. It also is a function of because changes are made as new information comes in, there's never once been a time where Mrs. McCourt has said, "Well, I don't have that information for you, but I can get it." It is always ready for the board immediately. The other people I want to say thank you to are to the superintendent and to Mrs. Bailey. People don't really understand the amount of work that the two of them put in to make sure that our budget goes forward and that the commissioners have what they need to be able to pass it. They work tirelessly to answer questions, field concerns, to correct misinformation, and to maintain a positive working relationship with the commissioners of St. Mary's County. There were many, many phone calls, sleepless nights, and long hours, but that led to our budget being primarily funded. While we did have to cut $410,000 from our budget, we were able to fully fund the negotiated agreement, which is of greatest importance, and we were able to address the compensation concerns shared by the Bus Contractors Association and to do more for their, make it possible for them to do more for their employees. And all of these things will have a positive impact on our students, and at the end of the day, that's really what's most important. And I think too often, we, we forget or don't realize, because things from our end seem to go so smoothly, but the work that's put in, I just felt it was important to recognize. So, thank you both, sorry. Thank you both, and thank you, Mrs. McCourt, and please share that thanks with all of your staff members. Greatly appreciated, so.
So, this is my first time in over a year and a half seated over here and not being seated over there.
Look at the big kids table.
And you can see my face, you know? And I don't have a PowerPoint presentation today. I want to keep it brief. We have our, we have fantastic partners. We're recognizing our safety and security personnel, as well as the incredible partners and peace officers that we have in the sheriff's office and the state trooper's office. And I know Tim Cameron, Sheriff Cameron would be here, but he also made a similar choice to Chairperson Bailey. She, she, he's with his son Scott, who plays for Salisbury, who won the World Series, the National Division III Championship last night. I think this is their first ever title.
First ever in the history of the university, yes.
In the history of the university. They've been to the show several times. This is the first time they've taken the show home with them. So, to Sheriff Cameron, congratulations, and to Scott, well done. You are, you're, you know, you're representing Chopticon and St. Mary's County very well. So, I just want to say a very similar, you know, we're one week away from concluding the most challenging school year that public education certainly has faced in my professional lifetime and probably in, probably in the history of public education. And we end, honestly, I think we end, we were ending stronger than we started. There are a lot of things that we have evolved into, compelled to evolve into. There are a lot of positives that came out of it. There's also a lot of things that still need to be, gaps that need to be filled in, and, and work that needs to be done to get all of our kids up to speed. But as I was telling the board earlier in executive session, this is an exceptionally special county. The parents, while I'm sure frustrated and impatient and wanting desperately to get back to, to normal, they've been with us, they have partnered with us, and that's how we've, we've gotten, we've gotten to the very end. Last week, I know the board is disappointed that they didn't get to join with me in that celebration, that three days of just unmitigated joy as we saw the class of 2021 walk across the stage, shake hands with their principals. There was a lot of handstand floating around. Don't worry, we were, I mean, the smell was everywhere. But shake hands with their principals, get their diplomas, go out and, and be with their, with their classmates, and with their parents, and with their teachers, the photos that were taken, and Dr. Marr, you referenced and thanked Dr. Marr and the, the whole crew that he oversees. These are people who are deeply committed to making the, you know, what I call them the memory makers. They, they're making incredible memories, and it's my, the greatest, if, you know, we talk about, you know, you want, you want something that's left, and they come back, and they remember. I hope that we're remembered for the, for people that really cared about preserving a record for our kids. So, when they come back in 10, 15, 20, 30, 40 years, they're going to be able to look at those photos of their, their youthful selves and watch the video of them walking across the stage in high definition with dramatic lighting. And they'll really, they'll really be captured, because those of us who perhaps graduated from high school a while ago don't really have, maybe there's a, maybe there's a blurry photo someplace.
That picture.
There's a photo at the end, whatever. You know, they, we've really been making, you know, they're making history, and they're, they're, they're an incredible group. So, I'm just, I just, I'm thankful every single day to be in this county, to work with a fantastic board, who gets to work on behalf of incredible employees who work every single day for our kids. So, just thank you very much. And with that, let's get on to some recognitions.
Okay. Mr. Wyatt, take it away.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
All right, I'm going to be lost, because Dr. Smith is not driving the machine.
I was going to say, I'm looking forward to everybody having trouble so that we can make comment about, because there was a certain amount of, you know, critiquing.
We could run on Scott a little bit about his.
There was some critiquing if it wasn't.
Yes, so.
The thing is, I never got, I never really got better.
That is not true.
No, wait, last time, you did go out in a blaze of glory, because he shut the whole system down, so.
Yeah, the last time, actually breaking the entire system. And then like, that's it, you don't get to touch it anymore, Scott. So, with that, look how quick, Mr. Wyatt, very efficient.
I'm, I'm doing my best.
There you go, very efficient, well done.
Okay, so, again, good morning. This is our annual recognition. Unfortunately, we skipped it last year because of, for all the reasons that have already been previously stated, but, you know, we do recognize both law enforcement and safety and security staff, despite missing our traditional annual recognition ceremony last year due to the challenges presented by the pandemic. We are committed to proudly continue with recognizing our law enforcement partnership and school security staff. I definitely appreciate the opportunity and your continued support, and we look forward to returning to a more traditional recognition next year. For nearly 60 years, we, the nation has recognized National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week of May 15 as National Police Week. We have St. Mary's County Public Schools traditionally gathered at the end of each school year to do the same. May 15 is not necessarily a really good time for our school year, because we're working on graduations and commencements, but we try to make sure that we take care of this. So, for our partners who are here and for the security staff that are here today, we owe them all of our gratitude and appreciation for helping to keep our schools safe and secure. The recognition today is just a small way to let them know that we cannot do what we do for our children in this community without their commitment and dedication. So, with that, a little bit different, because we don't have the podium, but Dr. Smith, I have, do you want to present the certificates? How do we want to?
Uh, how do you want to, I mean, I can, we can move it over there, we just stand in front of this. We can stand, we got a camera shot right in front of the schools and what have you. Look at this.
Well, there we go.
There we go.
Sir, first, I'm happy to present to you Mr. Larry McMullin. So, Larry, if you want to come on up. Okay, if I sit here and read?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay.
Now, everyone, everybody.
There we go.
And then we'll take a picture at the end, you on one side, me on the other.
But we'll line them up this way, right?
Yes, yes, we'll line them up here, and then I'll go on the end there.
Right, next year, we'll have the red carpet. Very well.
Congratulations. You're going to be the first, you're going to stand right here.
Board members, Larry McMullin is our Safety Assistant at Margaret Brent Middle School. Mr. McMullin has made significant, has made a significant impact on our school, staff, and students at Margaret Brent. After joining Margaret Brent team, he was immediately effective in promoting safety and security throughout the building. He possesses the ability to keep our safe, our schools safe by monitoring the hallways, helping the school crisis team, and dissolving conflicts that may arise to promote the safety of all students. Mr. McMullin consistently demonstrates knowledge, integrity, and compassion. He is fair and equitable to all students. He communicates effectively with students, teachers, and administration. What stands out most about Mr. McMullin is his ability to relate to the students in our building. He is always talking with students to help them guide, guide them through their decisions and choices. Thank you, Larry. And I failed to mention, but this is for last year, so we're catching up a little bit. This is 2020. And for the 2020 School Resource Officer of the Year is Corporal Jamie Davis, and Jamie is here, so. So Corporal Jamie Davis has made a significant impact at Margaret Brent Middle School as well. During her time at Margaret Brent, she has proven to be a valuable asset to our entire community. Corporal Davis starts her day greeting students as they enter the building. She ensures the students see her as someone they can trust to support their safety within the building. She is consistently monitoring hallways, walking throughout the building, and supporting any students. She's committed to the security of all students. In addition to her daily duties, she also teaches the DARE program to all sixth grade students at Margaret Brent. This allows her the opportunity to get to know the students on a more personal basis and promotes positive prevention strategies addressing drug and alcohol abuse. She communicates effectively with parents and students to help them better understand the expectations of our students throughout our school community. Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate it. Next is our 2021 awardees recognition, and first is Ms. Rosin Capers. Rosin could not be here due to a recent illness, but I'm happy to report she is recovering nicely. I talk to her quite frequently, and we look forward to having her back next year. But just for the record, Rosin is the team lead at Great Mills High School, and since joining our team in 2018, Ms. Capers has made a significant impact at Great Mills High School, serving as their team lead. Ms. Capers demonstrates a daily commitment to her work. She's enthusiastic, self-motivated, and easily inspires others. Ms. Capers makes the most of her vast work experience working with New York City Public Schools, extensive career prior to coming here, and shares her professionalism, knowledge, and skills with coworkers as her team lead. She has contributed significantly to professional development efforts for all of our security staff. She continually demonstrates her understanding of accountability for all members of her team. Ms. Capers is very supportive and makes every effort to help parents and students and school community members understand their importance and work towards with them. She's an invaluable member of our team, so I thank Ms. Capers. Our 2021, oh, let me see, oh, let's start with Allison. Sorry, sorry, Sarah, that was a trick, so. So, 2021 Trooper of the Year is TFC Allison Euler, Maryland State Police, Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. During the 2021 school year, St. Mary's County Public Schools piloted the gaggle platform. You may remember, we talked about this just a week or so ago, two weeks ago. This platform has been discussed during previous board meetings and is designed to identify high-risk student behaviors and situations involving students with their, using their assigned Google accounts. TFC Allison Euler has been instrumental in providing support to St. Mary's County Public Schools during the response and investigation of potential internet crimes involving our students. TFC Euler has been directly involved in many after-hours contacts with safety and security staff, students, and their family members to ensure their safety and the safety of all, and to protect them from high-risk online behaviors. TFC Euler has attended meetings with safety and security staff and provided briefings and orientation to enhance familiarity with this expanding area of concern for children and the work completed in concert with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. TFC Euler also has served for many years now as an adoptive school officer. So, for that, Allison, we thank you, so. And then finally, last but not least, Sergeant Sarah Smith, St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office. Sarah is, has the, she very proudly, she is the supervisor of the School Resource Officer Program and has enjoyed her time with us since she's been with us, so, yeah. Sergeant Smith is the supervisor of a St. Mary's County Public Schools School Resource Officer Program. She has been in this assignment since 2019. As we all realize, the last two years have been both unique and challenging. Supervising our School Resource Officer Program has been no exception to that role. The efforts to provide support and services to our students throughout the pandemic have been particularly demanding, especially in the context of not having daily contact with our students in the buildings. Sergeant Smith has been instrumental and extremely patient, extremely patient, extremely patient in providing 24-hour-a-day support to Department of Safety and Security at our schools. She has been directly involved in the coordination of countless number, a countless number of welfare checks, investigations, and crisis responses involving our students and family. No matter what time, date, weekend, or holiday, she has never failed to answer the phone when we have called. Additionally, she has assisted in all efforts to provide for security and traffic control support for our school-based meal distribution sites, school-based mass vaccination clinics, high school commencements, and many other school-based events. She has actively maintained a high level of communication with school safety and security and attends weekly staff meetings here in central office. Her dedication and commitment to support our schools and our school community have been tireless and truly commendable. In addition to her assignment as the School Resource Officer Program Supervisor, Sergeant Smith serves as an adoptive school officer, a crisis intervention team instructor, mental health first aid instructor, and a critical incident negotiations team leader. Her leadership and experience have been invaluable to our schools. Thank you, Sarah. And with that, board members, that concludes our.
And, and so, I would just like to finish with, just thank you very much for people who work every single day within our school systems and people who work with our school systems. Over the last three days of last week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, well over 2,500 people came into the schools and exited the schools, all without incident. Weather held all the way to the very end before we had a little bit of sprinkles, and it was all because of our great partners and our great staff working with everybody. So, just thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. How about if you get on one other side, and then, Dr. Marr, do you have a camera back there? He is back there. Somebody's back there. Is somebody back there? Dr. Montgomery, do you have a, can we use your phone perhaps? Oh, there we go. All right, because I do want to tweet something out.
All getting bunched up like bricks. Perfect, thank you so much. Thank you, guys, thank you. Thank you.
You have no public hearing. Jay, do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, then, may I have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
I move of the, I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Go second.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion is carried. We will move on to action items. The first one is how with our facilities master plan for 2021. Let's see if I can find.
It's been a while.
Well, it's been fourteen months.
But who's counting?
Oh, I assure you I am. So has Ms. Hal, so have we all.
Yeah, I was being facetious.
Good morning, and I do have to say it is nice to be able to actually see your faces and, and to be back in the room again. So I am here today to talk about the Educational Facilities Master Plan. Like everyone else, we've had our challenges trying to maintain our work, but Mrs. Hayden has put in a tremendous amount of work.
Absolutely.
So I really want to pay her some applause for what she's done to try and make this work for us this year, given some of the challenges we're going to talk about. So we have been talking prior to COVID about some changes that were coming through the public school construction program, and right now we're still, there's a lot of uncertainty. So we are trying to adapt and gain information and attend to meetings, but there is a lot that is still uncertain. Right now, we are getting word that the traditional CIP that we normally get funded through is not going to be funded at the same level next year, but in conjunction with that, it's going to be the new Built to Learn Act funding. And right now, we are currently, we've received a memo that says we're slated for a little over sixteen million dollars. The instructions on how that funding is going to be allocated and work has not been developed yet, it's still in the process, and the sixteen point three million is not guaranteed. There are seventeen county, or eleven counties that are sharing that pot of money, and this is our tentative allocation, and it is on a rolling basis. It is not part of our normal CIP, it's on a rolling basis, you'll start applying. The first wave of those are going to be approved this fall. You have to have a shovel-ready project. They're going for projects that were deferred for funding in FY 2022, which we did not have. So we are working, Dr. Walker and I just recently had a meeting with the state, with our regional facilities planner, to talk about this pipeline and how we're going to get projects in, and we have identified some projects that might be eligible. There is a change now, systemics were not originally going to be eligible, now they will. The project assessed a total of four million dollars, so that is a huge change for us, it's going to benefit us hopefully as we go forward. One of the things that they did talk about is that Built to Learn funding and a traditional CIP can be funded together. So one of the suggestions that we had is to go through and fund a CIP project through the normal traditional and then use that additional funding to bridge the gap. What that does, it also allows us to keep going through the traditional CIP project program the way we do. The approvals would be the same, the project would still be managed through St. Mary's County Public Schools staff, and that might help us bridge, when we know we've got that rolling average of five million dollars, if the traditional CIP is reduced, this would allow us to bridge it and maintain our five million dollar a year allocation. It does include design and construction funding, which is new and very beneficial. The key piece of this hasn't been completely finalized, there is no MOU finally in place between the IAC and the Maryland Stadium Authority, they're finalizing that. When projects go forward for BTLA, MSA will decide if they want to take that project or not. They're going to go through the list of eligible projects and determine, and then we'll have to have an MOU with them as well. We're monitoring what the flexibility is going to be with that, we want to maintain control of our projects, so I think the opportunity of looking at a traditional CIP augmented with BTLA may be our best bet to move forward. But as we continue on, we will definitely let you know what those changes are, we've got some state meetings coming up on this as well.
Can you go back just one slide? So just so no one is completely confused, the Maryland Stadium Authority, it says they're the stadium authority, but they also do a lot with parks and green space.
And universities.
And universities, so it's not as if like, you know, the legislator just plopped this school construction program down in the middle of them, and all they've done is run Camden Yards and FedEx Field, so.
Well, but they've also been responsible for the projects in Baltimore City.
Correct.
For the past few years.
Yes.
Which, you know, has not been a, I'll just say, has not been a smooth process at all, according to the folks in Baltimore City.
Yes, so I do sit on a MAEVE Facility Planner Work Group, and we're sharing a lot of knowledge of what's happening and how things are proceeding, and I think the public school construction program is, their intention is to produce more funding for schools, which is a good thing. How we get there, that, that is the piece of it that really needs to be understood, and the knowledge that all of the LEA staff members that are participating in these projects bring to the table, and, and we are conveying that through MAEVE, which is, is a good way for us to have our voice heard, and I think that PSCP staff is starting to definitely hear and wanting to work with us, hence the meeting we're having with MAEVE, PSCP, and I think it's going to hopefully be very beneficial. They are very knowledgeable. I think the thing that most counties want to do is we want to ensure that we're building schools the way that we build in our community, and we want to retain that, but we also want sixteen million dollars as well, so.
Yes, we do. Point four.
As we go on, there is still some uncertainty as we move even farther, because in FY 2025, we're going to have the new priority fund, that is still being worked out and what that's going to look like, but it is going to be based on our state facilities assessment, and since the last time I talked to you, we have completed our state facilities assessment, we are reviewing all of the reports, and we're working really closely with PSCP staff and Bureau Veritas staff to try and get our information as accurate as we possibly can. It's been a bit of a challenge, but we're continuing to work through. So as soon as the SFA is done, hopefully by the end of this month, then it's going to start working on the FCI and the MDCI, and that is going to be the basis for the funding decisions that they make through the new priority fund. So additional money coming, it is going to go to those schools that are in the most need, so I'm not sure where we're going to fall into that, based on the good work that we do through capital planning and maintenance. There's potential changes to the calculation for the cost share, right now we're staying at fifty-eight percent, and there still is that shift at the state level to want to push systemics down to the local level, which is going to be the majority of the projects we have, but I think if you look at the BTLA and, and making that systemic eligible, I think they are aware that that is the need across the state. So the SFA is going to be complete the end of June, we reviewed the initial data, Mr. Widdon and maintenance and myself have spent a long time reviewing that, we've had several meetings with the state as well, with Mr. Widdon included, and we're working through those issues. They're very receptive, they want it to be as accurate as possible. We are uncertain at this point of how the FCI and MDIC will impact the future funding and what they're going to look like, because all of the formulas are not written yet, so we will keep you posted as we move forward. So we get to the master plan, taking all of the factors in that we've been trying to look at the funding and how it's going to lay out and how FCI, FCI and MDCI may impact our future, we really struggled with getting data this year. Many agencies like the Maryland Department of Planning were redirected to work on COVID-related issues, so there was a little bit of a challenge of getting data, so you're going to look through some of the charts and graphs, and you're going to see that that data wasn't updated, it was just because we couldn't get that data, it wasn't available for us. The enrollment, we worked very closely with Maryland Department of Planning, and we are within five percent, they're kind of agreeing that we're going to return, it may, it may not exactly happen this September, but as the course of the year goes, we're going to return back to where we were pre-pandemic. So our enrollment projections model that going back to where we had projected to be. We are incorporating changes at homeschool, virtual academy, and the completion, hopefully this, this fall and winter of a facility utilization study, all will be incorporated as we move forward. Some interesting data that we did have, we did look at the enrollment change that we had, Mrs. Hayden expanded this chart out a little bit to look at the total number of students that we have in the county, and we were down point zero six percent change from the prior year in our enrollment, we do think that will rebound. The non-public school enrollment dropped one point six one percent from the prior year, and homeschool went up one point six seven, and I think that's, you know, we all kind of expected to see that, so the numbers were where we were. Overall, the total enrollment did drop about a thousand students. So what we talked about, we talked long and hard about funding changes that aren't quite solidified yet, we talked about where we were with enrollment, and Dr. Walker and I discussed it, and we're bringing forward the same CIP process that we have, the same projects that we have continuing on. So in FY twenty-three, it would be Town Creek's HVAC systemic renovation and Liddy Marshall Den's modernization. In FY twenty-four, Great Mills High School's partial roof, this is the second piece of the roof that we're doing, and Piney Point's HVAC systemic renovation. In 2025 would be Green Holly Bee's HVAC and the roof for A with a partial for B, that's a connecting piece, systemic renovation. In 2026 is Chopticon High School's HVAC systemic renovation, and FY twenty-eight would be Ridge HVAC and Lexington Park roof. When we started to talk about BTLA, two projects that we would want to look at would be Liddy Marshall Dunn and Chopticon. Those would be the ones that would be of the dollar amount from the state that we would want to consider how those funds may be able to be used, we'll continue to have those discussions over the summer. Because it is a rolling CIP approval for the BTLA, we could pull something out at some point if we so chose to and advance that and then realign for next year for the CIP. So we'll keep you posted as we go through the fall approvals of how that is going forward. So that is the Educational Facilities Master Plan for this year. I'll take any questions you may have.
Jim, do you have any questions?
Can you define systematic renovation?
Roof or HVAC or a combination of the two.
Okay, so like you have here HVAC and Chopticon, systematic renovation as, as opposed to, I think, I think you refer to complete renovation.
So right now, the mode that we're in is doing HVAC and roofs either independently or together, and Mr. Widdon, and I like to do them together so that it's, it's a comprehensive package. Or the other option we have is, and this is what we're doing at Mechanicsville, is to take those systemic components, add the educational piece to it, and do what the state calls a limited modernization. Those are the two places that we can, can really focus our attention on versus, you know, in the nineteen nineties when we were doing full renovations of facilities. We've done the bulk of those already, so we're really going to do a limited renovation or a multi-systemic.
So you might, just to change it, an air handler, that would be part of the systematic renovation you're referring to. You wouldn't be doing the whole system.
So when we do the HVAC or the roof systemics and they're state-funded, it's going to be a comprehensive update of that system. What Mr. Widdon and I are coordinating on, and you'll see it coming from the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan into the Educational Facilities Master Plan, is in the Infrastructure Critical, which is a local piece, you may see an air handler, you may see a series of them, you may see a chiller, those components are being replaced locally so that we can extend the life of a system so that we can then get the state funding for that.
Right. Thank you, Sullivan.
I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. Just putting this out there for people that, you know, are CEOs or admirals, captains on the base, also the county commissioners, the LUGM Planning Commission, or the Planning Board that makes, you know, approval for things that are to be built or approved for the county, you really need to read this master plan. It is so comprehensive, has so much information, it talks about agriculture, farms, new developments that are going in, how many students this could potentially have, how many homes, it talks about different communities, what's available in the communities, you know, whether it's sewage or the, what do you, the Met.
Metcom.
Metcom, yeah, I couldn't think of the name, I'm sorry. You really need to sit down and go through it, there's so much information that, an insight that you could have when you are making decisions for your company, for the community, like I said, the planning, the Planning Board, and LUGM, you need to read this. So I, I want to thank you for putting this together, like I said, there is so much information in here.
Hey, I appreciate that. We, we try and get a lot of information, and we're very excited, I mean, people look at the 2020 census and they're like, oh, it's something we have to do. My offices is very interested in that data, because it's going to give us so much more information to know where we're going to grow as a community and what the potential is. I mean, our goal is to make sure that we have educational facilities that support everything we need to do at the right time in the right place, so that's, we're, we're looking forward to next year's update when we have 2020 census data.
Well, I know that they're pulling, trying to pull information together for the next, the ten-year comprehensive plan for the county, and this is information that those people that are helping make those decisions really need to sit down and look at.
Okay. I don't have anything. Thank you very much. Incredibly thorough job, once again.
Good job, Ms. Hal, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing up the MOU. I know that, that we have, over time, expressed concern about the fact that, that the public school construction program as it's currently headed doesn't necessarily appreciate why we build schools the way we build them, part of which is in the law, and I really don't want us to go back to a combination cafeteria gym.
Cafeterium.
Cafeterium, yes. That I, I truly hope that, I know we, at MAEVE pushed very hard to make sure that the Maryland Stadium Authority would allow, that, that the law would, and the Built to Learn Act would allow us to continue to maintain some control over what our buildings, how, how they're built, and we go for permanence, not cheap rock, and to have to replace a building every twenty-five years makes no sense when we have buildings that are approaching a hundred years old, you know, so, and are in incredible shape because of the work that staff put in, whether it is the construction program through your office or through Mr. Widdon, the maintenance folks, and, and Mr. Varner for the, the daily maintenance of things. We, we take the time and spend the money to keep our buildings up and looking good so that they will last. Quality over quantity, I think makes sense every time. You get what you pay for.
Yeah, and there, there seems to be a little change in that, sorry, in that philosophy. I mean, for instance, when there is a meeting of the maintenance directors, they are now including the facility planners, and likewise on the facility planner side, they're including the maintenance directors. I think there is finally an understanding that it has to be a holistic look, it's not you just build it once and walk away, because you do turn it over to someone to maintain, and I think, you know, even looking at the fact that systemics are now going to be able to be funded through BTLA, I think there is a, an awareness that's coming, and I really do believe it is the, the partnership that we have with MAEVE and the voice we have through MAEVE that is truly making that difference, and I, you know, John Woolums and John McGinn are amazing assets to St. Mary's County Building Schools.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Hal.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the July 2021 Educational Facilities Master Plan for submission to the Maryland Department of Planning.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you want to just move right on to your budget amendment?
So we, we come before you usually quarterly, this one is the last quarter of the year, and the County Finance Department is cleaning up all of their accounts, so they did ask us to take a look at our projects, to see if there's anything that could be closed out so that they could close out the FY twenty-one budget for the reserve. We did identify one project, which was Great Mills High School Partial Roof, it is not completed yet, there, we are retaining a little bit of money to finalize all of the final payments to the contractor, but we did identify sixty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars that will not be expended on the project, that can be reverted to the county's FIN 21 reserve. So that is our request for you today, is to approve that so that we can return that money to the county.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, you said though, that you were keeping some of the money to finish the project?
Yes, so there was additional funding, more than sixty-eight thousand, so Mrs. LaIno in Design and Construction has looked at all of the invoices that are owed, she's retained the portion that she needs, and this was identified as surplus funding on the project.
Okay, thank you.
Was this part of the contingency money that was set, that was added to this project? Or was this, the, the substance of things didn't cost as much as was?
This would be contingency that would be remaining on the project.
Super, thank you very much.
Yes, it is their due diligence that requires, they, they do such a great job on making sure that the contractors do due diligence on their project, that we were able to come forward with this little bit of funding left over on the project, it's a small portion of the project. Yes, it is their due diligence that requires, they do such a great job on making sure that the contractors do due diligence on their project that we were able to come forward with this little bit of funding left over on the project. It's a small portion of the project.
It is, but every dollar counts, so.
Yes, it does. We've gotten to a point where with the budgeting between Mr. Witten, Mrs. LaIno, and myself, we're doing well. I mean, the market can be unstable and things can happen, but at the point where we're able to just give a small amount back means that it was budgeted properly.
Yes, thank you.
May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approved a transfer of $68,376 from the Great Mills High School Partial Roof Project to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County FIN 21 Reserve Capital Improvements Project Account.
Have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion is carried.
Thank you very much. And like I said, it was very nice being back.
Yeah.
Back to Mr. Wyatt and uniforms.
So, good morning again.
Mr. Witten, Mr. Varner, who else is coming?
I brought my back up this time. So, board members, we've been looking at uniform services for about a year now and trying to look at maybe some enhancements, some improvements that we can engage in. So the Department of Operations, Maintenance, Safety, Security are seeking the approval of Board of Education, from the Board of Education, St. Mary's County, to piggyback a Sourcewell contract, number 040920-UFC, awarded to UniFirst Corporation of Wilmington, Mass. for uniform rental and cleaning services. Staff request approval to use this contract as needed and as funding permits throughout the duration of the contract, which has the potential to devalue through May '22, 2025. Apologize for the length of this slide, but this is kind of important as far as background goes. So on May 8th, 2019, you approved the Prince William County Public Schools contract, RBB-019002, awarded to Centas Corporation of Mason, Ohio for uniform rental and cleaning services. Although St. Mary's County Public Schools has used Centas for uniforms for several years, staff decided to review and compare alternative options for these services, seeking improvements in delivery of service and management of accounts. In the fall of 2020, as for a step to this, employees within the Department of Safety and Security began renting uniforms from UniFirst Corporation on a trial basis under the Sourcewell contract. Based on positive feedback received from my department regarding the service, the quality, delivery, and invoicing particularly, I reached out to the Department of Operations and Department of Maintenance, and we began to have further discussions, just again, to improve service. And we have determined that we'd also like to use the UniFirst for uniforms for services moving forward. And I will certainly defer to Mr. Varner and Mr. Witten, but I think we're all in agreement that we do believe this will be a significant improvement in quality and service. At present, SNCPS has approximately 200 uniform employees across departments, including operations, maintenance, safety and security, and information technology. We spent a total of $85,729 in FY '19, $95,707 in '20, and currently $72,000 in FY '21 under its existing uniform contract. Pricing under the UniFirst contract is comparable to pricing under the existing Centas contract. So obviously, piggybacking is permitted by Maryland State Law as stated in the annotated Code of Maryland, Education Article 5-112, and State Finance and Procurement Article 13-110. Further Board Policy Regulation DJC and DJC-R encourages the use of contracts established by other agencies providing public bidding procedures were followed. So with that, we are requesting the Board of Education approve the use of the Sourcewell contract, number 040920-UFC, awarded to UniFirst Corporation for uniform rental and cleaning services. So, entertain questions and comments.
UniFirst Corporation, is that a Delaware corporation, did I understand?
They actually have a local office now in Maryland, so we've been making kind of Prince George's County.
Local?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yes, sir.
No, I just want to thank you for continually going out and making sure that you've got, you know, the best thing for the money and making sure that what you're getting works for you, you know, to continually reevaluate and everything, so. No questions, thank you. Great job.
I love the fact that Mr. McMullin earlier was wearing the new shirt.
Yes.
And I have to say, that was, that very sharp looking. I noticed a little difference from the Centas, and I think very professional. And I also think, you know, just looking at the way he was wearing it, it's like, you know, he felt good about the way he looked. And having that positive self-image speaks volumes when people are out in the schools, working with students. How they carry themselves makes an impact, whether it's something that the kids recognize immediately or if it's just something that they're aware there's a difference. So in addition to, you know, finding a good, a good positive deal that is, you know, going to work out better for us, I think that just the appearance overall is a very positive one. And you're not going to miss those badges when there's something going on in the school and those safety and security assistants have to really make their presence known in a positive way. It's right there, so nicely done, very nicely done. That's all.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board approved the use of Sourcewell contract, number 040920-UFC, awarded to UniFirst Corporation for the uniform rental and cleaning services.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Motion is carried. And our final action item is Ms. Cheryl Long.
Just took me a moment there. It's good to be back in front of you as well this morning. I am here this morning, excuse me, for you to seek approval for non-resident tuition rates. The, those rates are referenced in two regulations, JECR, which is School Admissions Student Withdrawal Regulation, and the JECA Regulation, which is the admission of transfer students. The non-resident student tuition rates are established annually by the Board of Education and adjusted annually upon the recommendation of the superintendent. They're prorated for students enrolled less than 180 days, and half-day programs are charged half of the rate. Parents of non-resident students paying tuition complete a contract, and the tuition is paid by semester to fiscal services. That tuition is waived for staff members. The rates are based on per pupil calculation, which we'll see on the next slide. Special education rates are calculated at a rate of 300% of the regular education rates, which you'll see in the differences on this slide. For non-resident tuition rates, the in-state, out-of-county rates, for current students, regular education students is $6,839, and special education is $20,517. The proposed rates to the right are $7,194 for regular education and $21,583 for special education students. For out-of-state students, the regular education current rate is $13,324, and the special education rate is $39,971. And proposed rates for regular education, $13,700 and $41,100. This slide shows you how those rates are calculated. For the, for school year '21-'22, the rates are based on the 9/30/19, September 30, 2019 enrollment count of 17,137 students. You'll see to the bottom of that slide that how the rates are calculated for Maryland in-state, out-of-county residents, students, excuse me. The calculation is based on the county plus local revenues divided by the total number of student, FTEs, which gave us the number of 7,194. And the out-of-state calculation is based on the state plus the county plus the local revenues divided by the total FTEs, which gave us the rate of $13,700. The recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
Any questions, Jim?
I remember last year I asked the question, any out-of-state people? You said none.
Right, we, we.
Has that changed at all?
We have one out of county.
One out of county, but not out of state?
None out of state, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Okay, all right. May I have a motion?
I move, we approve, the Board approved the non-resident student tuition rates as presented.
Do you have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. McCord.
I did a training this morning. I was able to bring it up with ease. Good morning. It is good to be back in front of you this morning. Before you is the fiscal year '21, as, financial report as of the end of May. On the revenue side, you see that out of the $229.6 million budget, we have a balance remaining to be collected of $1.9 million. A particular note, in the month of May, we've received all of our state aid revenues, with the exception of the handicapped children's special education revenues. We did not receive our sixth and final payment. We have reached out to MSD. They've indicated that they'll be providing this to us in August, which is exceptionally unusual. So we're following up in ongoing conversation with them about why there's a delay in that. On the expenditure side, we still have the high costs coming in for the special education transfers. It currently exceeds the budget by $222,000 in that particular line. But as you can see on a categorical basis, we do expect to have sufficient funds within that category to cover that cost. And within the insurance unemployment line, that continues to be an overage. This past quarter's bill actually reflected a credit, which was nice to see because they finally adjusted for the second quarter of the fiscal year's inaccurate billing to us. And then finally, on the bottom line, our year-to-date encumbrances and expenses totaled $222.7 million, and our available balance is $8.7 million, of which we've already planned for in the FY '22 budget to immediately put those funds back to use. Are there any questions?
I have none.
I have none, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
MSD strikes again.
All right, does anyone have anything else?
I just want to send, I know Scott touched on it, but a huge thank you to all of the staff at Central Office and all through the high schools. I think graduation did go flawlessly. You know, from the people directing traffic to directing people in and out of the building. So, you know, hats off to everyone on, once again, a job very well done.
Absolutely.
And of course, thank you to Dr. Smith and whoever else toughed it out through the four graduation ceremonies per school at each school for three days straight, so.
12 hours of commencing is a lot of commencing.
Think of it as like 12 hours of joy.
It was. My face hurt at the end of the day on Friday from smiling, from smiling so much.
Through the mask.
Through the mask, without the mask, in the parking lots. Smiles, smiles everywhere. Yes.
So, all right, so let's see. If no one has anything else, our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, June 30th at 6:00, and we are adjourned.